...of Chapter 231 of the laws of 1976 known as the Open Public Meetings Act. Ms. Robinson notified the public that the date, that the notice of the date, time, and location of the agenda for this meeting to the extent known was provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner: by posting such notice to the public announcement board of the Lakewood Board of Education, offices, Lakewood County Municipal Building; by emailing such notice to the Office of the Avery Park Press; by filing such notice with the Ward Secretary; by mailing such notice to all individuals who request it and pay for a copy of same. Do you want to call now? Ms. Jackson? Mr. Newhouse?
Here.
Mr. Raisin? Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Tendler?
Here.
Mr. Trecher? Mr. Slacken? Here. Mrs. Zalas?
Here.
Mr. Bender?
Here.
Okay, we have a forum. For the non-conference meeting is a closed session that will be limited only to consideration of items, an item or items with respect to the public that may be excluded pursuant to Section 7b of the Open Public Meetings Act. The general nature of subjects or subjects is to be discussed the same in the following: personnel items including employment, appointment, termination, legal issues, and court settlements. The board should return approximately at 7:30 p.m. Can I get a motion to go into a closed session?
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisin? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tendler?
Yes.
Mr. Trecher? Mr. Slacken?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalas?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Okay, this time we'll go into a closed session. Here. Mr. Raisin?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tendler?
Here.
Mr. Trecher?
Here.
Mrs. Slacken?
Here.
Mrs. Bender?
Here.
And this time we have some presentations. Oh, there's...
I would like to introduce to you Lakewood High School's 2017-2018 Student Council President Carla Parpin. Carla?
Ms. Winters, if we could just do like we did last time, and we'll take care of the schlepping, could we just move that gentleman touch that show? If you could just move that... It's up... And if we could ask the video man, George, if we could, because we want to...
Okay. I'm seventeen, a senior at Lakewood High School. I've been a tenth, attended Lakewood High School's all my life. I'm a part of the honors program. I'm a varsity volleyball player. I'm an anchor on the daily kinder news, a girl state delegate, a team class leader, and a part of the drama and TV production club. I'm very honored and grateful to represent my peers in these meetings. Back to the position we were in a few months back, it is very easy to say that we are strong. I want to thank the board for the ongoing efforts in making sure our sports programs stay intact as well as hiring the needed staff members so we receive the best quality of education as possible. I want to recognize the success of every post-board so far and every student staying on top of their grades in hopes of maybe being on a roll in the upcoming month. This month has been a great start to what I hope to be a great year, not only for the student body, but for the town as a whole. I hope that we progress and come together as a community and fight for the same things that we did last year, the best opportunity for our town to use. Though I am sure we will be presented with obstacles, we will prove once again to be kinder strong and come out fighting. Thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, at this time we have a brief harassment intimidation bullying presentation which will be delivered by Mrs. Tracy Palattonio, Supervisor of Guidance and Testing. Mrs. Palattonio?
As the district's anti-bullying coordinator, I'm here to report the district's HIB self-assessment data for the 2016-2017 school year. The Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights requires that we post anti-bullying grades as well as the anti-bullying coordinator information on our school website. Ours is found on the district website homepage in the right-hand corner. Every year, a self-assessment is completed by each school's anti-bullying specialist and the school's safety team. The score is a raw score from zero to seventy-eight, and it measures how well they have met the requirements and indicators with the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights scoring rubric. The rubric grades performance in eight categories. These are the eight categories as well as the maximum number of points attainable in each area. The ratings fall into categories as you can see at the bottom. Anything below fifty-two points means that the school did not meet state expectations in addressing these core elements. All of our schools in the district have exceeded requirements for the 2016-17 school year, and this is the breakdown by school by element. This slide shows the number of investigated and confirmed HIBs in the district over the past five years. There's been a steady decline in incidents each year. Finally, this data shows each school's self-assessment grades over the past five years. If anyone is interested in more information, you can visit the New Jersey Department of Ed website, or you can contact me directly, and so my contact information is on the homepage of the district website.
Through the chair, could we just go back to the last... What does this represent? And this is under NJSA, what is this?
Yes, these are the HIB grades for each school over the past five years.
So just comply with these state regulations. For example, Lakewood High School, when it goes from forty-nine to fifty-five to sixty-nine to seventy to seventy-two, is that an up, a down? What is that number?
Up. Seventy-eight is the highest score you can attain.
So the higher score, the better?
The better.
I have a question.
Yeah, I have one too.
Can you mention some of the shortcomings for Oak Street, some examples, or Lakewood Early Childhood Center, why they are below than other schools?
Sure, so... If you look at the elements for Oak Street School, you can see element number four and element number eight where there are shortcomings.
And what do those represent, those elements?
So number four here, and again, they were the lowest scores, but they're also the lowest possible ratings. You could only attain six in those areas, so curriculum and instruction related to HIB as well as HIB reporting. So it was having a maximum of six that they scored before.
So there was no PD on HIV?
There was, they just didn't get the maximum attainable score.
What's the element number four in the list?
They're in order.
So number four, curriculum instruction, maximum skills. Number eight is HIV reporting?
HIV reporting. It should be noted to the district last year purchased for the first time an online HIB reporting system called Hipster, so we are now tracking all of our data online. We can also use the data and reports from Hipster. The anti-bullying specialists and the school's safety teams review the data and can run various types of reports often once generated from Hipster. So that's a new feature.
You just started this year?
This past year was our first year, so we're going into year two.
The staff has been trained?
Yes.
Through the chair, just for a legal requirement, how do parents, guardians know about HIB and how to report it? Where is it posted? How do parents and guardians know about this?
In addition to being posted on the website, Mrs. Winters sends home a packet for parents every year, and there's an extensive section about HIB and HIB reporting.
Now, a part of Hipster, is there a parent order part of Hipster that parents can go into or hipster?
They can, they can go in, or they can also just make a report at their school to any staff member, and any staff members required to report it to the administration that same day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Through the chair, it's my legal opinion that the public should be able to ask any questions on this section of the HIB report, if any, whether they signed up or not. Are there any, this is a legal requirement in my opinion, so are there any questions? There doesn't have to be, but are there any questions from the public as to the HIB reporting done in excellent fashion by our HIB coordinator? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Palattonio. Mr. Trecher, is your video downloaded? Yes. Yes. If I can have Dr. Anderson, Mrs. Weiss, and Mrs. Starczewski come up to the podium. Okay, I would first like to introduce Dr. Anderson, Supervisor of Special Education. And Mrs. Shaw, Supervisor of Special Education. At this time, we're going to have a presentation on, I can't speak, I apologize, on special education.
Is it possible, Ms. Winters, we could dim the lights a little so we can see the video better?
No, you need to make this guy clear.
I don't think we can dim the lights in front of him.
Jim?
We need a special cape.
Maybe a cape?
We need a cape.
Perhaps we can ask Mr. Stella?
How are you doing, guys? Coach Ossoriana here, showing you guys some more information on the Lakewood Challenger League. We're two weeks into our fall season, we're doing a great job playing soccer and flag football. We put our teams open to all students' IEP in our district. We're excited that any kids joining want to continue to participate. We'll be going into the winter season and after fall for basketball, and in the spring when it's summer. Buenos dias, I'm Coach Ossoriana, the Team of the Lakewood Challenger League. So we're going to invite all the kids that have a classification with their IEP to participate in our Lakewood Challenger League. We're inviting all the football, American and football, and then for the winter, we're going to set up in the primavera, we're going to baseball. I'd like to hear that, that's important. Gracias.
The Related Service Department of the Lakewood Board of Education provides speech therapy, occupational therapy, and physical therapy to classified students according to their IEP. The services we provide are with the most experienced, qualified staff who are highly trained in the respective areas of expertise. Therapy services are provided to support the students in their educational setting. Currently, according to the students' IP's, we have three hundred and four students receiving occupational therapy, a hundred and twenty-four students receiving physical therapy services, and eight hundred and seven students receiving speech therapy services. The Related Service Team has state-of-the-art equipment to include the stimulators, bow scoots, trampolines, rope-hauling walls to be installed, ellipticals, and treadmills, and more. We have a smooth Ellen sensory room at Oak Street School, Spruce, and our Lakewood Early Childhood Center. The Smooth Ellen multi-sensory environment offers students a place in which they can regulate their senses and organize their behavior. The room is full of special embedded tools such as a vibrating platform, speakers, an LED projector, a motorized mirror wall, beanbag chairs, bubble tubes, all of which can be adjusted by the student to meet his or her needs. Based on Smooth Ellen, a concept developed in the Netherlands nearly forty years ago, the room helps students with autism and other disabilities better regulate the amount of sensory stimulation they experience. Linda Misabir, an internationally recognized expert on multi-sensory Smooth Ellen rooms, was the first person in the United States to create a Smooth Ellen room, and she personally trained our staff in how to use Smooth Ellen rooms to help our students with autism and other impairments. The Lakewood School District is one of the only school districts in the state of New Jersey to employ the Universal Exercise Unit and Therapist Method. The Universal Exercise Unit uses a series of cables, pulleys, and straps to improve muscle strength, range of motion, and motor control by eliminating gravitational forces. The Universal Exercise Unit has helped our students learn to walk, to jump, to balance, to stand, and to develop functional posture. The Therapist, which was developed from a NASA astronaut suit, is used by therapists for students with muscle weakness, sensory integration tendencies, and motor control and postural endurance issues. The innovator and developer, Isabel Koczylinski, has personally trained our staff to use these therapeutic methods to help our students progress and to succeed. The goal of our Related Service Department at the Lakewood Board of Education is to support our students so that they can progress and be successful in their educational and classroom environment. Our therapists are driven, they're driven to make a difference, to make a difference in the lives of the students that they service.
Hi, my name is... I'm happy to be an employee here at Lakewood Public Schools. After joining last year in February, I had the opportunity to compare what HIB therapy we're providing in Lakewood and the multiple HIB therapy that I personally was providing in our district schools. I can tell you that the push-in therapy and follow-up therapy students receive is phenomenal, and I couldn't be happier being a part of our team.
The Therapist is used for individualized students to support IEP attainment, and I have seen students flourish using the Therapist to improve their function in the educational setting.
Hi, I'm Laura Fluency, and I use I station to recruit new sports.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth, I'm a Clifton Avenue Grade School teacher here. I teach special ed in self-attained classroom. I teach grades two and three. Basically, I work with the students' goals from their IEP's. Every year, my students make great progress, working with the parents in conjunction. The students work very hard on their goals. They're tested on DRA skills, their sight words, which are the five words, comprehension reading tests, it's mandated by the district, and they also attend, the parents attend workshops here in Clifton Avenue. Workshops are given at the parents' convenience, and together with the parents, we are able to make great progress for the students.
My name is Tanya Lee, I teach LLD Social Studies at Lakewood High School. What makes my students successful is probably using technology. They feel very comfortable, it keeps students engaged, it allows me to put lessons on Google Classroom. As they move through the lessons, I can provide scaffolding, which makes them more successful. They can work at their own pace. I can also differentiate the lesson based on each student's ability, and lastly, it allows me to monitor their progress, and really, that is what makes success in my class.
Ms. Winters, I'm a teacher in Lakewood, work for Lakewood School District. I teach the auditory learning care grade school program. My students have made great progress.
I'm Elena Zachlas, I'm here as a consultant at Lakewood Public Schools as a BCPA. I have a BBA, a BBA Associate.
My name is Marisol Garcia Blackwell, I'm a social worker for the Lakewood School District, and I work for the child study team preschool. Hola, mi nombre es Marisol Garcia Blackwell, yo soy la profesora social, y yo trabajo con el grado de escuela. I worked with the school district for sixteen years, and I'm a graduate of Lakewood. Yo llevo dieciséis años con el distrito de Lakewood, y me gradué a la escuela de Lakewood. Now, we're going to see some information regarding our referral to the Lakewood Child Study Team. The team consists of a social worker, a teacher, a learning consultant, a psychologist, and a speech therapist.
The purpose of this meeting is to discuss John Usain, he had sent us a letter, some concerns regarding Usain, so we are here to discuss with you. We are the Lakewood Child Study Team, and we're certainly even a part of that team. I'm Refis Carria, the case manager, as well as a school psychologist on the team. We're going to go once around and introduce ourselves.
Hi, I'm Michelle Morris, speech therapist.
Hi, I'm Marisol Garcia Blackwell, I'm a social worker, and we'll be typing today's notes, and you will be getting a copy of that before we leave.
I'm Judy, the general teaching assistant.
Hi, I'm Karen Filkin, I'm a learning consultant on the child study team. Nice to meet you.
Okay.
Pick a, pick a color.
I think Michael.
Have you, I'm a child candidate, have a visitor today?
I'm good. How are you?
Are you ready?
Yes.
Holding hands?
Mm-hmm.
Shaking hands?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
I'd like to thank anyone who had a hard making videos, they're thinking about excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's have a hand for our supervisor.
And I would just like to say thank you for all the support we've been getting with our Lakewood Challenger League. It's something I take very dear, working with those students of ours, as well as Special Olympics, and anybody that would like to get students involved, just shoot me an email. And in regards to our growth in numbers, it's a matter of you guys getting the word out, so thank you for that. As a matter of myself, the amount of support we've got to have, more students involved in Avery and our Lakewood Challenger League. So, we'll get more. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. I'm just going to give you a quick overview of the Special Services Department. Can you hear me now? First, we have Supervisor of Special Services, Dr. Sharice Anderson. In this department, we have three secretaries in district office. We have Alida Zegui, Jackie Burns, and Jennifer Brunel. Child Study Team members at Clifton Avenue Grade School, we have Wilda Esmart, who's the secretary, we have Laura Bell, social worker, Carol Bowers, social worker, Karen Filkin, Michelle DePetro, who's a psychologist at the preschool, and we have a new staff member, Christine Iris, who's a social worker. At Lakewood High School, we have Donna Geraldino, who's a secretary, we have Panina Abrams, psychologist, we have Jen Kaznowski, social worker, Vicky Fortuna, who's a psychologist, and John Co, I'm not saying his last name.
Do we have a speech therapist in the house?
I think it's from working with Michael. Okay. Now, we have Lakewood Middle School Child Study Team, we have Alida Esmart, who's the secretary, we have Daphne Bins, who unfortunately is leaving us, who's a social worker, we have Miriam Jacobs, LDTC, we have Donna Kleimer, social worker, Gerard Haney, psychologist, and a new staff member joining us, Leah Raskin, who's also a psychologist. At the LG Clark School Child Study Team, we have Donna again, who's the secretary, we have Rachel Whale, who's an LDTC, and Hannah Zemman, who is a social worker. At Pioneer Elementary, we have Jenna Hendry, of LDTC, all of them. At Spruce Street, we have a new staff member, Janaya Hunt, who is a psychologist, we have Beth Brumbow, LDTC, and we have, I can't pronounce it, Yana, I'm not even going to attempt to pronounce the last name, as a psychologist. At Oak Street School, we have Janaya Hunt, that can be, Jigila Nuthbound, LDTC, and we have Peter Stern, who's a psychologist. And finally, we have the preschool, we have Yasenia Newcomb, who's the secretary, we have Michelle Halli, who's a social worker, Agnes, as a psychologist, Marisol, as a social worker, and Rikka, as a psychologist. Overall, the child study team is made up of eight social workers, six LDTCs, twelve psychologists, and the total staff is twenty-six child study members. Total in-staff special education, we have one hundred and thirty-three paraprofessionals, we have one hundred and nineteen special education teachers, and sixteen related service providers and consultants. We have three secretaries, CST secretaries in district, in the schools, for the schools, we have three social, we have three CST secretaries in district, in the district office. For behaviors, we have Alana Zachlas, who provides behavioral support for our teachers. She's our case manager of students. She conducts FBAs that are required as per the IEP. And we have, she also does consultation visits to assist with specialized techniques to support the students in the classroom setting when necessary, as per behavior plans. We have Chaya Levy, who's an auditory verbal consultant. She's available to provide support for our case managers and the teachers of students with hearing impairments. We also have Sue Foley, as everyone knows, who's been with us for a long time. She provides support for students who require DIFR interventions. We also have an on-staff ABA analyst therapist, Allison Rollins, who provides behavioral support for our students, teachers, and case managers. who provides behavioral support for our students, teachers, and case managers. And for related services, we have 304 occupational therapists. Number of public school students in district receiving services. We have, for both teams, we have 304 students. PT, we have 124 students. And for speech therapy, we have 807 students receiving services. Okay, district special education programs at ordinary capacity in the district as of today. So grade K1 MD, grade 2 MD, grade 3 MD, grade 4 MD, grade 4, 4, 5 MD. We have our K1 autistic, grade K1 autistic, grade 2, 3 autistic. Our grade KLLD, grade 1 LLD, grade 2 LLD. Our ICS 6 through 8, resource room 6 through 8, ICS 9 through 12. And our resource room 9 through 12 are all clear or at capacity. Mr. Hindlebuck, if you could come up to the podium. We need our Elmo now.
From a legal perspective, it's important for us to realize, and as teachers and staff saw in recent training, I'm not good at this Elmo, so I guess I'm going to turn it off. While we're waiting, the obligation of the board is to provide inappropriate public education that are on the state in the least restrictive environment, which is called LRE. Again, I say it as it is, but we do not. We have an obligation for every child to be, doesn't work, okay, to put, to attempt to educate every child in the least restrictive environment, provided, provided we can provide what's called a free and appropriate public education. What should be showing on your screen, this is the law, which is what I'm presenting. 6A 14.3 is called program options. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but as you see here, as you see here, we are supposed to, at the outset, try to educate students in a general education setting, which means just because he or she has a disability, doesn't mean they should be excluded, doesn't mean they should be in self-contained resource room. We try to give them as many supports as possible. And sorry for my Elmo skills, but these are the supports we're trying, by law, we are obligated to try. Only, only if this doesn't work, do we go to the next area. And the next area, as you see, this is straight from the code. The next area, we look for, if we can't do it in the least restrictive environment, we need to look for other public school districts who can. And this is called the continuum, the LRE continuum, which means you start for every student in district. You then look in district from a general ed setting to a resource setting to a self-contained setting. Then you move on to other school districts. Again, it's an expanding continuum. I will say what I feel and what the law is. You saw tonight, for the first time that I can remember, a very detailed video, which shows that in fact, we do have good programs in the district. Which again, it needs to be the word IUP stands for Individualized Education Program or Plan. So it's, again, we have to start and then expand if necessary. But we need to get the word out there that we have tremendous services, both staff, therapists, and everything else in district. Continuing, I'm not going to bore you with the entire statute, but from a legal perspective, regardless of who you are, what you are, race, religion, color, creed, and who you know, we're supposed to start looking at options in district, which is an obligation, which in every IUP, the team is supposed to consider. What you heard from Ms. Winters in her presentation, as well as the excellent presentation by our supervisors, is that we are in need, and yes, I will point to the state, Mr. Schafter, who will immediately call Mr. Ozara, who will then immediately call whoever they need to call. We need more programs in district. If you didn't notice, is that good? Of course, I may not be here by the next meeting, but that is fine. But I will say what the law requires. If you noticed on the listing of classes, for example, we do not have, and I want to thank Ms. Bowers, who I believe is here, Carol Bowers, who is here. Who is a social worker, a graduate of NYU, et cetera, has worked for the district for numerous years. She brought this to my attention recently. For some reason, we have no what's called BD programs. BD programs are called behavioral disabled students. As a class, typically, they could be emotionally disturbed, they could be multiply disabled. It's a variation. But at the moment, for numerous reasons, and as I've said at my presentation, we're not looking for a get view, we're looking to resolve in a collaborative fashion, since we are here to be consumer friendly, consumer being the students of our public schools. We have no BD programs currently in our district. Again, why, we can go from here until next, one next millennium. But that is a serious shortcoming, because essentially, if you have significant behavioral issues, which students have and they're classified, we are compelled to send those students out of district because we don't have a BD program. We must immediately find funding and money for these BD programs, because again, when children need to go out of district, they must go out of district by law. But we need to look at more opportunities in district. The idea, which is supported by case law, articles, and research, is that we try to include students meaningfully in the local public school. If we don't have, for example, a BD class, how are we servicing those students? It would be unfair, both to the child and to the staff, to have students who have significant behavioral issues to just plop them in a regular ed class, a supported class, a resource room, or self-contained. I don't know many districts of this size who don't have BD classes. So we need to look at that. We need to find the appropriate funding for that, which again, we can't owe buses to train in. We have to do this now. We need to find BD classes. We need to at least start a pilot program at the perhaps elementary level, where we can find space and where we can find room and resources for that. You also heard in the presentation that many of our self-contained and even our in-class resource, in-class resource by law is where there's a general ed teacher and a special ed teacher collaborating in the classroom. We have a shortage of those on many levels. Again, I'm not here to say why, I'm not here to say who. And I am here to say that legally, we need to free up resources. Again, we can all take buses, which I would plan to sponsor to train in, but that's not going to change the current situation. The current situation is, according to the statistics and numbers we have, we have a shortage of program options. And that's not because of anyone, or any group, or any people, but it's because we need to start building future-oriented programming here. Because on the one hand, our out-of-district costs are what they are. On the other hand, if we don't have in-district opportunities, the IUP team, which consists of the child study team members, parents, and therapists, are compelled to send students where appropriate out of district. That is, there's more to go on legal analysis here, but I'm hoping, Ms. Winters, if you could, could you address, for example, yes, I love putting you on the spot, but we are here to be consumer friendly. So how are we going to look to create more BD programs or placements in the district with appropriate staff, with appropriate supplies, with appropriate modifications, with appropriate supports? Is there any plan for that, or any way we can look at that? Because it's my legal opinion that we are not complying, especially in that area, with the requirements of 6A, which I just showed you. So is there any way we can look to do that? What would be the timeframe of that?
I would be with Dr. Anderson to discuss our options.
Well, Dr. Anderson, you're here, correct? Okay. Dr. Anderson, you and I discussed this also, correct? And you would agree as supervisor of special education that we need BD options? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's now discussed. So now we need to, we need to look for options, because legally, legally, we are, we need to have, and I'm sure the staff, I see many very good staff here. I would think they would agree that we need to have in-district options for students who, it's not their fault, they're born like that, it's a fun, whatever. We can go into a four-hour research study on that. But we have students who are classified and needing a self-contained BD type of program. I would assume the staff is in favor of this, provided appropriate supports and modifications. Is that correct? Yes, yes, yes. So we've had that discussion, Ms. Winters. So how do we get this into action? Because many board members are asking, and many members of public are asking, how we can create perhaps, again, slowly, we can recreate the world today. So how can we, what would be some possible solutions to that, to comply with our legal mandate to have options in this?
Do you have a list of students for me that I can?
Well, I wouldn't discuss students publicly, but I know Dr. Anderson and Ms. Bowers and others have students at the elementary level who either are currently in district, who need in-district opportunities, or some of them are even out of district, where if, if, if appropriate, we could possibly consider bringing some of those students back, provided we have them. Would you agree with that, Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
This is Darszewski. This is Wise. And child study team members, if you could just stand for a moment so we could say adieu. These are our child study team members who are hard, who are dedicated to following the law and the least restrictive environment. Would any of the team members disagree that we need to vote for at least a model BD option in the district immediately? Anyone disagree?
No.
Good. We have tea, thank you. We have special education teachers here. Could you please stand up? And also regular teachers, could you stand up so we can applaud you? I would assume that the LEA, I would assume that the teachers would want also to comply with program options for looking for free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. Is that correct? That's correct. So I'm not sure who else gets the vote here, but we have, excuse me. We have the teachers, we have the child study team members, and most importantly, we have the law that requires. Thank you so much, Ms. Winters. We're looking forward to those options. Next, it includes the presentation. Right now, we're going to go out in order and take the recognition of the public. Okay, remind everyone to determine the time limit. I will signal you with our very second part. Remaining, our first individual is Lisa Vargas. Ms. Vargas, who is the head of transportation, is here. Let's have a hand for Ms. Vargas. She signs up to speak?
She did, she did, actually.
I have not signed anything.
Oh. Okay, well, that was right. Well, someone wrote, is there another Lisa Vargas in the room? Okay, if you want to be Lisa Vargas, she's a very good transportation person. Here she is. Okay, thank you.
I think it's five minutes in there.
The next would be Gus Kakabas. Gus, if you could come up. Gus has been our transportation consultant for a new year. Gus formerly was in charge of transportation in Tom's River Board of Education. Gus has been a friend of the district, of all the children. And the board wanted to give him the opportunity. Gus has correctly submitted a letter. Gus has only been at this for about a year or two, joking Gus. He's been in transportation for several decades. So the board wanted to give the chance for us to express the appreciation to him and for him to address the board.
And I thank you for that opportunity. I'll be very brief. I took this job, Michael, as you remember. You hired me in a kind of a hectic meeting on January 2011. It was during some, a little bit of a traumatic time of transition that was going on in the district. And the night of my hiring, after being voted on by the board, I was immediately put into the executive meeting room with a group of rabbis and asked to settle their problems. So that was, that was my introduction to Lakewood. But I can tell you that over the seven years that I've been here, it's been an absolute privilege to be associated with this great school district, with the great administration, and the great board members that I've had the opportunity to work very closely with. So my time in Lakewood is sunsetting. My love of Lakewood will never end. I will always be a phone call away should the board need me, or should any administrators need me, or the state monitors need me. But I am going to pursue some other opportunities I have. And I feel the board is in very good hands now with the non-public transportation being handled by the LSDA, and the in-house public school transportation being handled very aptly by Ms. Lisa Vargas and her staff. So the time for my transportation consulting is starting to diminish in its importance as far as urgency. And I think that I will take advantage of some other opportunities I have. But I want the board to know, the administration to know, the state monitors to know, the public, the teachers, the students, what an absolute privilege it has been these seven years. So thank you so much.
You know what's nice about Gus? He says it was a turbulent time. That was an understatement. We were just missing about 30 to 40 routes for our public school students and just as many for non-public. And Gus, yes, he was brought here from, he was then retiring from Tom's River. And we thank us for all of his dedication and service to the people. Next, please, Shamrin Soler. Ms. Soler is here as a staff member. Again, is that right? Right. I don't know, she intended to, I had the pleasure of being here this past Sunday at the Challenger League. Just to, again, I guess we're trying to market our in-district programming. Ms. Soler previously worked at Rodberry Douglas, is that correct, Ms. Soler? Which is one of the state-of-the-art programs in New Jersey for autism in New Brunswick, where I can personally tell you I sue districts to get kids in there. And Ms. Soler is now with us at the high school and running one of our self-contained classes. And her washing machine and dryer will be working by Wednesday. So thank you, Ms. Soler, for coming. Pastor Glenn Wilson.
Good evening. Gus, thank you very much for your service. Sorry to see you go. And I also like to say that this year, the opening, the bus routes in Hope City was very good. And I think it deserved it. What is happening in my mind tonight is the recent disasters in Mexico and Puerto Rico. I am personally connected with Puerto Rico. A lot of my work in ministry has been in Puerto Rico. And I am totally tainted by the attitude of the disaster in Puerto Rico. I was sitting in the car talking to one of my friends there. And the pain that they're going through. I am currently engaged in a lot of fundraising. And what I want to say to the district is that if there is any fundraise that the district is going to be doing for these disasters, through my organization, we guarantee that 100% of your donations will get to the ground. And we have identified some needs and we have targeted some needs. And I am planning to travel to the island probably in the next three weeks when I meet my goal. And through my organization, 100% of your donation will get to Puerto Rico. And through my organization, a hundred percent of your donation will get to Puerto Rico, and we will see to it that every dollar, every cent is put to work. So if the district is planning to do any kind of fundraising, I ask them to consider giving it to us, and we will make sure that all of it, a hundred percent, no overhead, no administrative costs, a hundred percent of it gets to the island and put to work.
Glenn, if you could just let, what is the organization's official name? So people want to donate.
The official name is Restoration Family Worship.
Thank you.
Restoration Family Worship.
Thank you. While we're on that topic, through the chair, we do, in addition, and Glenn is known to do this good work, we also are having, I know the staff got a email over the weekend, and also, Oscar, are you still here? Oscar, okay, we are having currently a food drive, as all the parents got and all the staff got. We are asking for food to be brought in by tomorrow. Again, it is short notice, but it happened in short form. All the districts, elementary and high school and middle school, the main offices, you could bring food to, that is canned food, it has to be not fresh, but canned food, or medicines and things of that sort, diverse things of that sort. And then it is going to go to the voice of Latino Loves Voice Latino, which is Mrs. Morales, which is going to get to her Tuesday morning, and then she and her organization have arranged for a truck to go to a cargo shift, which I think comes in, which has been donated. So while the staff did get, we would like to see a lot of donations to that. Some of the board members actually, all, all were invited, it was short notice, because disasters usually help not get noticed. But some of the board members did come yesterday, Herb, Mr. Raisik, Mr. Bender, let's have a hand for them. Again, if you could, by, again, short notice, but disasters don't get noticed, by Tuesday morning, by, I believe it's 9:00 AM, the food stuffs have to be in the school, at the main office, which will then be transported by the district to the collection site, and then will go on cargo. So these are causes that we, it's actually nice it brought together in a unified fashion, and we should continue not to have disasters, but to have collaborative experiences together. Thank you.
That concludes the recognition of the public.
I'd like to get a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Winters wanted, if you see there, and we tried to make them big enough, there was a concern last meeting, I think it was Mike, but I don't remember who exactly, about what programming we have for our mandate, which is public school students, what programming we have to the left, I believe it's to your left. Mr. Holmes, I don't know if Randy is here. Randy, you were, Randy's here. Randy, if you could come up and briefly discuss your program, which is to that, I believe it's the left. So if you could, this is a program that is here is operational. We'd ask that the staff get the word out, Mr. Holmes, if you could, in short, most importantly, actually, I read about it, Mr. Holmes has recently been honored by, if you could remind me, Randy?
The Met Conference Hall of Fame.
Which stands for the?
Metro Athletic Atlantic Conference.
So let's have a round of applause. Mr. Holmes is a special education teacher and many more things, he's the coach of our basketball team and other things, and he's located at the high school. So if you could, in short, describe your program. So the public is aware, we'd ask that Jim put this up on the website immediately, that is the flyer, as well as do an all mail, and whatever you call it. Go ahead, Mr. Holmes.
It's the Lakewood High School, Lakewood School District Open Gym. It's just a program, active school hours, seven to nine, Monday and Wednesday, just to keep our kids, our students off the streets, you know, giving something positive to do. But we all know, our children, our students, they don't do well without a sound, so we're just trying to do something positive in the community.
And just for the benefit of the public, what raises is open for?
From seventh grade to, well, sixth grade to high school.
Six through twelve?
Yes.
Now, what are, hold on, six through twelve, and what are the hours?
From seven o'clock to nine o'clock.
And there is no charge?
No charge.
And it is supervised?
Yes, it is supervised.
And it's in the high school?
In the high school gym.
Any questions? Randy Holmes, who everyone knows, and if you don't, welcome to meet him.
That's ninety-one.
That's ninety-one. So, yeah, Lakewood graduate?
Yep.
So there you have it, that's one of several programs. It seems like we're not necessarily getting the word out enough, so please pass this along, we'll do an all, whatever it's called, and let students and staff know. Thank you, Randy.
If you look to the right.
If you look to the right, we have Boy Scouts. Boy Scouts will commence on Tuesday, October 3rd, starting at Spruce Street and Oak Street Schools from 3:30 to 4:30, and at Cooten Avenue and Clark Street School at 3:30 to 4:30. Mr. Jerome Townsend will be here on October 18th to explain the Boy Scout program. Just so you know, the Boy Scouts will be using Program H from Georgia Core University.
That program is for elementary students, any student, I believe you said 3:30 to 4:30. It's at Tuesdays and Thursdays. Again, Mr. Trishaw, if we could, all, whatever, and put it on the website, so students, parents, and families are aware.
The Boy Scouts apply for boys from kindergarten through grade six.
So before someone asks where the Girl Scouts are?
Just the right age.
We have reached out to the Girl Scouts, and we are waiting for your answer. Okay. Then you would ask.
Through the chair, I make the motion to go into the executive session. Do you need to have a second by law?
Second. All in favor? So the public is aware, there will be action, because we haven't done the agenda. We do, we have invited, under contract negotiations, several, one outside vendor, so we need to continue meeting with them, and there obviously will be action, because they haven't voted on the agenda. So how long? We're going to estimate thirty minutes. Again, but I don't want anyone to be deceived, there will be action, obviously, the agenda and other items, but it will be about thirty minutes, so it is now, whatever time it is, it is now eight thirty-five, it looks like. We're going to shoot for nine oh five, but it may be longer, because we have under contract negotiations, and we do have several staff members. Thank you for your understanding.
Second motion to...
I'm asking.
Is it only for motion?
Second.
Yes.
Over here. Mr. Raisik?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Tenler?
Here.
Mr. Trisher?
Here.
Mrs. Lakin?
Here.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Bender?
Here.
At this time, I'd like a motion to accept the special meeting minutes of August 17th to 2017.
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Lakin?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson, absent. Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Trisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to add corrections to the agenda. Everyone got a copy of that in executive session there. There were some reports and recommendations of the business administrators, there was one, and there was some on the superintendent, corrections to the agenda. Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Lakin?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Trisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Okay, also, I have the additions to the agenda. They were also given out in executive session, the public has it, it's part of the regular presentation there, it was on the back, it said additions to the body of the agenda. Okay, so there were some additions there. It was pages one, two, three, four, and five. There was one report, recommendation of business administrator, and quite a few for the superintendent, any... Any questions?
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Lakin?
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Trisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
I just want the record to reflect that the VA is here through both session, she did have some childcare, she did some childcare until 10:35, so I'll publish that she was here until 10:35.
At this time, I'm looking to approve the business agenda in the whole, including the corrections and the additions to the business agenda.
What is it?
Any questions?
The hiring of the VA and assistant, is that on the superintendent items?
It's on the superintendent items. Are we, are they voting on that?
No, that is, this is a gym, this is on the table.
Is there a motion?
Yes. Mrs. Lakin first, and Mrs. Gonzalez second?
Yes.
Roll call. Ms. Jackson, absent. Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Trisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Lakin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Now we move to the superintendent agenda, including the corrections and the additions to the superintendent's agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Which items are the VA and assistant?
They're on the additions to the agenda. Page number three, under transfers. Around the correction, the additions to the agenda. H3, under personnel. E, transfer.
So which items are, what's the line?
It's E, it says transfers, E, number eight and number nine.
So E, number eight is you?
Yes, and number nine is the supervisor.
So E9.
E8 is you, E9 is Mr. Rodriguez. That's correct.
Just so we're clear, did everyone have the correct agenda? What page was that on, Mr. Campbell?
It was page number three of the additions to the agenda.
And I just want to note, the public, the air conditioning office is saving money for the same, so enjoy the weather.
So I will make a motion to, again, I made a motion, I'll make a motion to approve this superintendent agenda except E9.
Second. Second.
Any other questions? Just so we're clear, and David and I were discussing, so if you vote yes for the motion made, that means you are approving all the superintendent items, but for E9, E9, is that a motion?
E9, certified or not certified?
It's under E9, under the transfer, on page three.
And David and I are discussing...
It'll be the certified additions.
Mr. Shafter and I just discussed, if the motion carries, then it's good, if it doesn't, there could be another motion made, correct?
Yes. So we're voting on everything with the exception of E9?
Right.
Approving everything with a no on E9?
Correct.
Ms. Jackson, absent? Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
And she has to everything?
E9.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Trisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
I just want the record to reflect that the VA is here through both session, she did have some childcare, she did some childcare, till 10:35, so I'll publish that she was here till 10:35.
At this time, I'm looking to approve the business agenda in the whole, including the corrections and the additions to the business agenda.
What is it?
Any questions?
The hiring of the VA and assistant, is that on the superintendent items?
It's on the superintendent items. Are we, are they voting on that?
No, that is, this is a gym, this is on the table.
Is there a motion?
Yes. Mrs. Lakin first, and Mrs. Gonzalez second?
Yes.
Roll call. Ms. Jackson, absent. Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Trisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Lakin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
I just want the record to reflect that the VA is here through both session, she did have some childcare, she did some childcare, till 10:35, so I'll publish that she was here till 10:35.
At this time, I'm looking to approve the business agenda in the whole, including the corrections and the additions to the business agenda.
What is it?
Any questions?
The hiring of the VA and assistant, is that on the superintendent items?
It's on the superintendent items. Are we, are they voting on that?
No, that is, this is a gym, this is on the table.
Is there a motion?
Yes. Mrs. Lakin first, and Mrs. Gonzalez second?
Yes.
Roll call. Ms. Jackson, absent. Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Lakin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
I just want the record to reflect that the VA is here through both session, she did have some childcare, she did some childcare, till 10:35, so I'll publish that she was here till 10:35.
At this time, I'm looking to approve the business agenda in the whole, including the corrections and the additions to the superintendent's agenda.
What is it?
Any questions?
The hiring of the VA and assistant, is that on the superintendent items?
It's on the superintendent items. Are we, are they voting on that?
No, that is, this is a gym, this is on the table.
Is there a motion?
Yes. Mrs. Lakin first, and Mrs. Gonzalez second?
Yes.
Roll call. Ms. Jackson, absent. Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tenler?
Yes.
Mr. Trisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Lakin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Okay, also, I have the additions to the agenda. They were also given out in executive session, the public has it, it's part of the regular presentation there, it was on the back, it said additions to the body of the agenda. Okay, so there were some additions there. It was pages one, two, three, four, and five. There was one report, recommendation of business administrator, and quite a few for
But if Mr. Campbell, you can hire for a permanent assistant VA because Mr. Campbell, and I'm not hoping, I'm hoping it all works out, but he would then go back to assistant VA. That's what you're saying, Mr. Schaffter. And that's what you're saying, Mr. Schaffter? Is that, yes, Kevin?
Yes.
And I concur with him.
Was he a permanent assistant VA?
Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
So how was he a permanent assistant VA if the previous VA was interim?
She wasn't.
She wasn't interim.
Regina, who we wish her congratulations on her marriage and her leaving tomorrow. She was, from what I understand, a permanent VA.
No, it's called acting. She was, she was interim until June thirty, but she was a permanent, I thought I won.
Thank you. Is that against that? Thank you. Are there any, any other reasons, Mr. Campbell?
Well, how the, how the, I'm sorry. I have to vote on it. Are we advertising for this entering June thirty?
Yes. That's what I think.
So, so the person is taking a seven-month position?
You can't offer a permanent assistant VA because you have. So you'd be an.
Eighteen.
Well, it has to be through June, it can't be beyond June thirty. Correct. So that's, David, hold on. Right. Doesn't, you agree with that, right, David? And you agree with this, Mr. Schaffter?
Right.
Okay, so there's your answer. So we have a motion, we have a second, we have a vote, please. Yes. Mr. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Mr. Kendler?
Yes.
Mr. Tricer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lakin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Is there any old business that needs to be taken care of? Any new business? Anything really good in welfare? Motion to adjourn. I'll be at second. For the next meeting. The next meeting, I understand as of now is for the public's benefit of the board. I believe, I, it's October eighteenth, six-thirty PM, seven-thirty PM. That is the next regular scheduled meeting. The board president did ask me to remind if we could have a moment of silence for the people in Mexico, Puerto Rico, Bahamas, et cetera. If we could have, Mr. Bender, you told me to remind you of that. So if we could have that moment of silence. We don't do prayers in public, obviously, but we are asking for that moment, so that the public can join us. Thank you. As far, we remind people, this is public as well as the board, donations of food and supplies, not fresh food, are available in any of the offices until Tuesday. And there was discussion tonight in the opening. Yes, she is, Mrs. Medina's still here. There might be, Ms. Winters was just approaching, there's Medina, a fundraising drive for Puerto Rico. Apparently, there's times when staff, I'm just mimicking, but I heard a dollar or something, students. So there are plans, Mrs. Medina's going to get that information since Ms. Winters.